Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of September 4th, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back from break, everybody. All council members are here. Next on the agenda is the meeting agenda approval. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Councilmember Zornz?
Is this where I ask to pull one item?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I would like to pull item D A B number 18-126, the firefighting bunker gear.
Okay. Is there any other changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, how about the projected agenda? Any changes? Looking good. Okay, next is the review of public engagement opportunities. There isn't one, okay. Oh, look at that, says none. That's helpful. Special presentation, first we have Fire Chief Kruen to give a presentation.
How was it on? Is it on? Oh, awesome. Okay. Kind of, we've got one more coming, we'll go ahead and proceed though, thank you. I'm going to stick to a script because we know what happens when I go off-script, so it's much better for everybody if I do that. So, the Bothell, the city of Bothell has a wonderful community feel to it, and one of the events that really caught my attention was our annual 4th of July Fire Department Pancake Breakfast. It's an amazing show of both public support and the Fire Department's chance to give back to our community. It's definitely an all-hands event, and we often have council members come and participate and show up, and District 10 Commissioners, they're all pitching in. While there are many people who have contributed to the success of this event, there's no one outside the Fire Department, who may or may not be conscripted to come, who give more time and effort on a continual basis. For at least the past 10 to 12 years, it's been awhile, we're trying to figure that out, Lee has been a dedicated sponsor and advocate of the annual event. Every year of the event grows, and this year we serve pancakes and sausage to an estimated record, sausage is my idea, was a record 2,800 people. It was phenomenal. The first time I met Lee, I asked her about her involvement in the Pancake Breakfast, and she told me that she planned to be back again, and hoped I would be okay if she was my boss for three hours, and I told her that was an acceptable deal. It worked out great. So along with Alexa, her daughter Alexa, Lee and the staff of Alexa's Caffeine Catering have been instrumental in putting on our signature annual event. Those that know Lee, and that's probably just about everybody in Bothell, knows how dedicated she is to the city, and especially Main Street. Lee volunteers for the Pancake Breakfast and so much more, because she really cares about our community. And it's in that spirit that we decided to give some official recognition to Lee, Alexa and Alexa's Caffeine Catering for their longstanding support for the Bothell Fire Department. So in a small token of our appreciation, we are pleased to offer them the plaque of recognition that reads, "The City of Bothell," come on up, Lee. "The City of Bothell Fire Department recognizes exceptional public service. Lee Henderson, Alex..."
Alexa.
Oh my god, I kept forgetting the last name, Alexa Sheik. I just lashed her about this, I completely forgot. That's why I gotta stick to the script. Okay, Alexa's Caffeine, and I have it in front of me, Alexa's Caffeine Catering. Your continued support and commitment to the annual 4th of July Fire Department Pancake Breakfast is truly remarkable. We applaud your heartfelt show of community spirit and sincerely appreciate your gracious generosity of both time and resources, Bothell Fire Department, September 14th, 2018.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, next on the agenda is the Snohomish County Housing Consortium with Mark Smith, Executive Director, there he is.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, for this opportunity to come and present to you. For the record, my name is Mark Smith, I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Consortium of Everett and Snohomish County. Not a great technology person. Executive Director simply means I vacuum my own floor. I'm a one-person office. Thank you. How do I advance it? How do I advance the slides?
I'm sorry.
My apologies, I should have asked you this beforehand. Okay, good. Thank you. So I'm here to talk to you this evening about affordable housing. All of you have this report in front of you, a hard copy, it's also available electronically, it's available on our website if anybody wishes to get it. So the consortium, very briefly, is a, I have about 50-member organizations, of which about half are nonprofit affordable housing providers, owners and operators, the rest are on the business side, the bankers, the architects, the construction firms, so forth and so on. The mission of the consortium is to essentially increase the supply of affordable housing in Snohomish County. And so, last year we took on this report, and publishing this report, why we do this, I used to have a staff person, and my staff person did some interviews with people who live in affordable housings, people on the street, and this is the reason all of us, my members included, do this. If housing were cheaper, said Brian, we could have paid the power bill, my mom would have insurance and tabs on the car, we'd actually still be in an apartment. Not my mom in the car, my sister staying at Cocoon House, and me staying at a friend's house, and I'll just say, his sister's very lucky to get into Cocoon House, which is a shelter for teens in Everett. So this is why we do this, and it goes countywide. Currently, Snohomish County has 1,128 students living in motels, in shelters, or on the street, right? So they're living in shelters, in hotels and motels, or on the street. These are not kids who are doubled up with relatives, these are not kids who are staying with a friend, these are kids in our schools right now, who are living in this kind of environment. Over 41,000 households pay more than half their income for housing, and this gets worse every year as rents continue to increase. So think for a minute what your own total household income is, and if you had to pay more than half of that for housing, and how that might impact your life. From 2013 to 2016, rents went up 28.4%. Zillow now has data through July of 2018, and rents have gone up from 2013 to July of 2018 by over 30%. 2.9% wage decrease from 2013 to 2016. This is from the Employment Security Department of the State of Washington, which gets their data through quarterly surveys and reports by employers. So this, these two data points right here go to the heart of the problem, right? Rents have gone up 30%, and wages have gone down 3%. So the city of Bothell, and I have to stop here and apologize about this affordable housing inventory. When we started down this road, we were looking at the city of Bothell that exists in Snohomish County only, and we were not able to get data for the King County part of Bothell in terms of inventory. So in this, on the Snohomish County side, there are exactly zero units of housing affordable to families whose total household income is 0 to 50% of AMI. And what that means, 50% of AMI, AMI equals area median income, right? So half the households are above, half the households are below, 50% of AMI for a family of four is about $45,000 a year. So in the Snohomish portion of Bothell, the Snohomish County portion of Bothell, there are exactly zero units of housing available to those folks. Now the need, and the reason, apology, the need captures the need in the entire city of Bothell. And there are reasons for this, and which are way too in the weeds to go into, all I can do is apologize and tell you that we are working on teasing out those numbers, the affordable housing inventory, for the entire city of Bothell. And as soon as we can do that, I'll provide that to you. But in the entire city of Bothell, both Snohomish and King County sides, the affordable housing need is broken down by income levels, so 0 to 30% of AMI, which means a family of four making less than about $25,000 a year for a family of four. There are just over 1,600 households in Bothell that fall in that income category. Of those, 283 are cost-burdened. Cost burden means they're paying more than 30% of their income for housing. There are over 1,000 of those households that are severely cost-burdened, meaning they pay more than 50% of their income, of their total household income for housing. So you're making $25,000 a year for a household of four people, and you're spending more than $13,000 of that just on housing. So you're looking at $1,000 a month to live on. The need, you can see, and that's about 82% of those households in the city of Bothell. The need is just as intense at the 31% to 50% area median income, and these are the income levels that we target, and my members target, because the private market in a normal and rational housing market will get you down to about 60% in Snohomish County, right? It'll get you down to about 60% of AMI. So people who are making 60% of AMI, about $50,000 a year in normal market years, can go out on the private market and find housing, right? That's not true right now, but we've chosen to focus on the 0 to 30% to 31 to 50%. So what do we do? And I apologize, I'm throwing a lot at you here, because I've been told I've got 15 minutes for this presentation, and I served for eight years on the Linwood City Council, so I now know how hard it is to sit there and listen to all these presentations. So the question in this report that we set out to answer is, how many units of housing do we have? How many additional do we need? What's the unmet need? And what can we do to try and meet some of that need? So we start with the premise that housing is the foundation, it's the foundation for all other social services. Educational outcomes are better for children, and there's lots of statistics and lots of reports on this. Wage outcomes are better for adults when they have safe, stable, affordable housing. Health outcomes are much better when people have safe, stable, and affordable housing. So without a home, whether that's a rental unit or a single-family home, all of these things become much more difficult. It's very difficult for children to do homework when they don't know where they're going to sleep. So in this report, you'll find seven policy recommendations and four funding recommendations. I'm only going to go into a few of them here, sort of the top-line recommendations. Number one, on the policy side, is apply site and population-appropriate parking standards, all right? Make sure, or allow for different parking standards for different types of affordable housing. For example, a 20-unit building that is going to house the chronically mentally ill doesn't need two parking stalls per unit, which is the standard in a lot of cities, right? They simply don't need it. Each one of those parking stalls is between $15,000 and $20,000. So that puts a high burden, a cost burden, on the developer, which is a nonprofit to do that. Use public land for affordable homes, right? Do an inventory of all the public land in the city of Bothell, and determine what is suitable for development. And in the last session of the state legislature, they clarified the law that it is okay, it's legal for a city to give land, it's legal for a city to rent land at whatever price they want to set. So you could enter into a 50-year, dollar-a-year ground lease, or you could simply give away a public piece of property. But this inventory needs to be of land, all public land, not just city-owned, but all publicly-owned land that's suitable for development, because obviously if you have a junction box on a piece of property that's 400 square feet, and you're not going to use all of that land, or leave it at 1,000 square feet, nobody's going to build housing on there. If you've got a property that 80% of it is wetland, it's not suitable for development. And then reduce or waive fees. Those fees are impact fees and sewer hookup fees. So this is an example, excuse me, my staff member, Andrew, wrote this, he really got into it. And it's the story of Pleasant Valley, he said, "Located in beautiful Snohomish County, Pleasant Valley is a multifamily development consisting of 50 very low-income homes. Thanks to the courage and foresight of the local city council and planning agency, Pleasant Valley saved $525,000 through site-appropriate parking standards, $437,000 through impacting utility fee reductions, 1.25 million through the acquisition of public land." And we ran these numbers through a lot of nonprofit developers, through some city planners, and these are as accurate as we can make them. I'm not trying to inflate everything here, I'm trying to be very realistic. You can contact the city of Monroe, they waived impact fees for a housing hope project that amounted to about $450,000. The city of Everett has donated a piece of land for a 65-unit permanent supportive housing. So if you look on the right-hand column, you'll see that a project that starts out at $19.3 million, through these three simple things, is reduced to $17 million, $17.1 million, right? What does this mean, right? It means that perhaps you get more units out of it. It could be the difference between a project moving forward and not moving forward, this kind of cost-saving. Sometimes, cities think that because it's public money, usually from the feds or the state, that does the bulk of the financing of affordable housing, that they can sort of layer on things that they'd like to see happen because of this development. The truth is, all of the money, the federal money, the state money, is allocated by a competitive, through a competitive application process, and those developments that can reduce costs compete the best. On the funding side, the biggest bang for the buck is a housing levy. The state allows an affordable housing levy, it does not count against the city's or county's property tax cap. It's a separate voter-approved levy, needs 50% plus one. A 10-cent housing levy, and this is a county-wide housing levy, and we're really looking for county-wide approaches, we're encouraging all cities to do these things, because we don't want one city to be more attractive than another city. This is a county-wide problem that needs a county-wide approach and county-wide solution. So a county-wide levy, a 10-cent levy, would bring in about $11.8 million a year. It would cost the homeowner approximately $34 a year, it would provide 650, 750 new affordable homes, and housing vouchers for 400 to 500 homeless students and their families. And this is just one example, we've got all sorts of scenarios that we've laid out at different funding levels. So this is one option. We're not pursuing that this year, considering what the state did with the McLeary decision, which raised everybody's property taxes. My property taxes, I live in Linwood, went up by 20%. It was not a pleasant thing to open that bill, and plus the SIRS levy that is going to happen in November. We don't want to compete with those, we understand that there are needs across the county for a lot of different things. However, we do think that affordable housing is also one of the most pressing needs right now. So this is something we're looking seriously at doing next year, or perhaps the following year. Second, increase of the mental health and chemical dependency sales tax. This is 1/10th of 1%, this county has already implemented the first 1/10th, brings in about $15 million a year. Those can only be used for services for the mentally ill and chemically dependent. The second 1/10th, 60% is required to be used for facilities for these two populations, treatment facilities, other facilities, including affordable housing. So that has potential to bring in, excuse me, $9 million a year. I will say that the reason the housing levy is our number-one priority is because every dollar raised locally is typically leveraged at five to one. So an $11.8 million levy would typically bring in about $55, $60 million a year to the county in what are called loan income tax credits and the housing trust fund. So we're very keen on this. I'll end with a quote from McKinny-Vento Liaison in the Edmonds School District, and for those, I'm sorry, the Everett School District. For those of you who aren't familiar with McKinny-Vento, it's the federal program to assist homeless students in our K through 12 programs. Each school district has a liaison. Amy Perouse, the Everett-Mckinney-Vento Liaison, said, "Most of these families are very capable. They just need that foot in the door. If they get into something that they could afford on their own, it's going to change generations." And that's what we believe, that if we want to break the cycle of poverty, we want to stop people ending up on the streets, we have to start with safe, stable, and affordable housing now. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, I forgot, I have another slide. If not now, when? If not who? If not us, who? Everybody's familiar with that. And these are the things that we are asking not only city councils and the county council, but also residents to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any questions? Is this thing loud or something? I'm just not used to being here. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So Snohomish County is presenting today, tonight to Bothell, and this is kind of like your recommendations that I see here. How are all the cities in Snohomish County joining together to kind of work toward accomplishing something together?
So there are a couple of things happening. One is, and I'm a little out over my skis here, because it hasn't been announced publicly, but the, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said anything. There will be an announcement. I'm sorry, I do apologize. One of the things is working through the consortium, because I do represent all of the housers in Snohomish County. Another one is an organization called the Alliance for Housing Affordability, which is made up of elected officials from all of the cities, or most of the cities in Snohomish County. They are looking at this. And another one is Snohomish County tomorrow. All of these recommendations that I've presented to you tonight, hopefully I will get some time to sit down with the leaders of Snohomish County tomorrow, and try and get these on a county-wide agenda. Because again, what we don't want to do is go city by city trying to get these passed, even though I am going city by city to make the presentation, trying to give everybody a heads-up that this is important, and we're trying to do this countywide. We don't want to have to present an ordinance, a model ordinance, for every city on each one of these policy recommendations. I'm a one-person shop. It's just, it's too much. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Just to follow up, you had mentioned the three, Housing Consortium, Snohomish County tomorrow, and Alliance for...
Housing Affordability.
Housing Affordability. And you said there are representatives from most of the cities?
Mm-hmm.
I'm guessing not from Bothell, because I haven't heard of it before.
Yeah, I don't think Bothell is represented.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep. Next, we have staff briefings, and the first one is Mr. Gong on the Citywide Bike Plan briefing.
All right, good evening, councilmembers, and welcome back from your summer break. This is more of a heads-up than a briefing, so I apologize, I don't have any of my wonderful graphics or handouts at this time. But city staff has been taking a fresh look at our city bike plan, and that, the last one we had was adopted into our comprehensive plan, was probably done about 15 years ago. This update is being prepared to meet the Puget Sound Regional Council's Active Transportation Plan objectives, which we were, which was a goal that was adopted in our last, adopted comprehensive plan as well. This update will also provide a prioritized plan that can be integrated into our capital facility plan, which already has a placeholder for bike improvements. At this point, staff has developed a draft network plan based on bike facility improvements that have been evolving significantly in the recent years nationally. These improvements don't include just bike lanes anymore, we're now into like a, you know, protected and buffered bike lanes as examples that offer more comfortable and safe facilities for all ages and abilities. We have also contracted with a consulting firm called Tool Design Group to assist us in the public outreach and to help us refine the final plan, which will be ultimately brought to you when we coordinate with you guys on the comprehensive plan amendments in 2019. Later this month, most importantly, we are scheduling two public meetings to get input from residents, citizens around here, and interested parties. We hope you can attend one of those, if you can. And if not, we are, will be providing you the information and a link to the draft plan for your review, and you can look at the details and provide me input and feedback on that. That's all I have.
All right, any questions, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, I'm wondering when the public meetings are?
Tentatively planned right now for September 19th, Wednesday, here at City Hall, and then the following week, September 26th, for our North End, our North End site at Frank Love Elementary School.
In the evening?
Yeah, 5:30 to 7 o'clock.
And can you remind me again what the, you said we were doing this partially to comply with some PSRC?
Well, PSRC, one of the goals that they set in their Vision 2040 Plan was to have all cities' agencies prepare active transportation plans, and that's just mainly to look at improving mobility from non-motorized transportation modes to transit and vehicles, everything.
So is there a due date for this plan?
No, that was just, it was, it's a suggested goal, and we basically adopted that to, into our objective of our comprehensive plan, transportation element.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I too am interested, will you email me the dates and the times? I was trying to write them down.
Definitely. Well, we're finalizing those, and I'll definitely send you guys that information.
That'd be appreciated, thank you. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Yep. Next is the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee briefing by Mrs. Combs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sabrina Combs, and I'm the Sustainability and Projects Coordinator. I am the representative of the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, also known as MsWAC. So typically, the meetings that we have for this are monthly. We meet the, on the second Friday of each month, and in those meetings, we discuss various solid waste planning from King County's perspective to the cities, and we discuss and talk about the different things that we're working on. Sometimes we do meet occasionally, one to two times a year, we meet with the SWAC, which is, SWAC is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and that is made up of the haulers, some union members, and some community members as well. And in these meetings, this is what we discuss. After the meetings, I do provide a set of meeting notes that are from me attending the meetings. Those notes are sent out to the city manager, the Public Works Director, councilmember Zornz, and then we also get a set of official meeting notes from the committee itself. So there are several notes out there that help us understand what's been going on. And then, to assist the council going forward, I will be providing periodic MsWAC updates at council meetings here. So what I've done today is I am going to give you a list of the top items that we're talking about in this meeting, in this committee, so that you have an understanding of what's going on, and then I will give you an opportunity to ask any questions or comments you might have. The first one is that we are looking at the comprehensive plan. So currently, we've been working for several years on the comprehensive plan. This is the document that outlines what the rules and regulations are related to solid waste in King County. Right now, as of July 26th, we sent the document off to the county executive and county council for review. We at MsWAC sent a letter supporting the current document as-is, without edits, just saying that we knew that a lot of work had been put into this document, and we wanted to make sure that the county executive, county council were aware of that work and effort that the committees had done. At this point, it's in the county council's hands, so we don't have control... At this point, it's in the county council's hands, so we don't have control of the schedule. It is anticipated that we should receive a response back from the county executive and county council at the end of this year, possibly early 2019, with their edits or comments about the document. At the same time, it's also going to the Regional Policy Committee. And they have, are going to receive a briefing on August 22nd. So there's a lot of information going on of sharing this document and making sure that everybody's aware of the rules and regulations that are outlined. The next steps for this document is that once we receive the comments back from county council and the county executive, we will have 120-day decision period so that we can look at their comments, review them. In particular, I will be reviewing them to make sure that a lot of the things that we have been concerned about in Bothell are addressed. Things like the Northeast Transfer Station are still included in the document. We will also have a copy of the document, that's a hard copy version, that I put, make available to the community at the customer service counter. That version is placed out and then we also notify the community that it's available. And typically, there's also a way for people to comment as well, so we make that available to the community as well. Then my next plan is to return here to you and present that information and see if there are any additional comments we might have. And then we typically have an option to adopt the plan at that point. In addition, the other topics at MSWAC are the King County solid waste increase that they have for the tipping fee. So currently, it's $134.59 per ton, and that is going up to $140.82 per ton. That's an estimation of about 34 cents per month on garbage bills for single residential family homes. We at the committee have appreciated the King County Solid Waste Division listening to our requests. In the past, they would wait several years before providing a rate increase. And what we've asked for in recent conversations with the comp plan is that they make those increases smaller and over time, instead of doing large lump sums after a longer period of time. And so these changes have been made. In addition, the local hazardous waste management program has some rate increases also. They initially had some rate increases that they proposed to the committee. And we suggested that they modify theirs to the plan that King County solid waste has taken. So they are going to do small increments between 2019 and 2022 at 5.4% annually. And so as you can see, starting in 2019, the rate will go up to 89 cents from 84 cents and then incrementally over the next four years. The commercial rates will also be modified from the tipping fee and in the local hazardous waste management program rate. However, those vary depending on the types of service and what's set up for that commercial program. So it's a little harder to give you an exact estimation of what that number would look The other topic that we're working on is the Recycling Task Force. Currently, because of the National Sword policy, several solid waste haulers, as well as city staff, are getting together to talk about the impact of this new policy and what it's doing to the local markets, as well as how processing has changed and the amount of contamination that's being experienced at the MRFs. And the MRFs are where your recyclables are processed. So with that, and also with the increase in the number of items that have been added to the Blue Bin, our recycling bins in Bothell and throughout the county, and actually throughout the area, it's a, it's a national, it's a national problem that we're having. What they've realized is that people are practicing what we like to refer to as wishful recycling. They have something in their hand, it's plastic, it's whatever, and they just assume, that's fine, and they put it in the bin. That item may be contaminating the load. And with the changes and China closing their doors to the number of, to the recyclables that we used to have, that has modified the current system that we're using. So we have a group of city staff, haulers, people who actually work at the MRFs, solid waste planners getting together and trying to come up with some short-term and long-term objectives to address this problem. They have, we have a consortium in this group that has developed a toolkit. And that toolkit is helping us to educate the public. We are starting to do posts about that on our Bothell Cool Facebook page. And then the staff in the different cities are working on steps with the haulers that we can determine that might help for educating the public and what next steps we need to take in order to improve our systems going forward. So as we learn more about those, I will be coming back to council if there are any impacts to rates or the list of recyclables that we're currently accepting. And with that, just note, we do have two haulers in Bothell, so we are working through both sides of those contracts with the waste management staff, as well as the Recology Cleanescape staff on this. The other item that they're working on is the, King County put out a request for information. This is different than an RFP. With the request for information, they're looking to gather ideas for what might help with this whole recycling market and what we could do differently. The applications were open in July and were due in August. And then we're hoping to hear more about these application and the ideas that were developed. So we're looking forward to hearing what different community members or organizations might have come up with to help with this. Are there any questions or comments? I know it's a lot of topics.
Deputy Mayor?
Hi. Thanks for the presentation. I met last month with Pat McLaughlin and they reviewed the comp plan with me, which you didn't do in this presentation. I'm wondering if you could just briefly go over that. I think there were three main recommendations in the comp plan.
Are you talking about the different waste processing recommendations? Yeah. So some of the recommendations are that we can leave the system the way it is with Cedar Hills and extend the life we're currently using, which is where most cities are leaning towards. The other is waste to energy, which is what they're calling it, which is basically incineration, incinerating the trash. And then the others is they're looking for other options and resources that we can pursue in resolving this issue. So those are some of the topics that we've been pursuing. Is there anything in particular?
Well, the recommendation was to extend, extend the life of the landfills, correct?
Right. That's the first one.
And then the other thing I think they talked to me about was the site, deciding to build a new transfer station, close down Houghton and build a new transfer station, or at least that's a recommendation.
And that's separate from the landfill. So the transfer stations, what we've been working towards, and I have brought to the council before, is that with the potential closure of Houghton or changes to Houghton because it hasn't been remodeled in several years, is that we would build a new Northeast Transfer Station because of the growth in this area. Most of the growth has happened here. It's considering, it's continuing to increase. And so we have been asking that King County build a new transfer station here in the Northeast. They have included that as part of the comp plan document. And that's why we have submitted a letter saying, we support the work that's been done so far, but we're not pre-approving the comp plan at this time because that's not been our recommendation, just because we want to see the comments that come back from the executive and from the county, from the, from the executive and King County Council.
I see. So that explains where you're coming from. Do you personally have any issues with the comp plan?
At this time, I like the work that's been done with the comp plan. And I think that we have done very good work in putting together and a very extensive document that goes through the policies and the steps we want to take to reach our goals. There have been some new additional information we've learned about National Sword since we've been working on the comp plan. But luckily, the language that we created in the document right now gives us the ability to have some flexibility with this information. With the other information that we've included in the, I think it's a great document and outlines the goals that we have for, for King County. And that's why a lot of the cities are very concerned with any modifications that might happen before we approve it.
Got it. And then finally, you talked about the toolkit with the National Sword issue. Is that toolkit available?
That toolkit is available and I can make it available to you. There is information for just talking, just information that helps you talk to the community about what it is and outreach. And then the other pieces of the toolkit are more for outreach staffers like myself to give information on social media or our websites. And that's what we've started doing is we actually have a, on the Bothell website, we do have a China Sword page that outlines some, that outlines some of those basic tips. And then we're gathering more information as the task force meets so that we know new information. For example, we just learned about how to recycle, which is a really great resource that helps you identify the package that you actually have and the recycling symbol with guidelines about where those items should go.
Perfect. I'd love to have it because I could send it out in my newsletter.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Oh, there we are. Councilmember Zornz?
I gotta chuckle out of your wishful recycling. My daughter has, has things taped to our bins. And we sit there with plastic going, which, where does this go? And she gives us big, heavy sighs. It's written here, it goes, there's, it's pretty complicated. So I can see why people get confused over it. So two kind of rabbit trail questions. One is, I hear the term China Sword versus National Sword. Is that, have we moved to national because there are other countries that are stepping in and also placing restrictions? Or is there, or do you know the reason behind that?
I do know the reason. So when this started out, it was National Sword, I'm sorry, China Sword policy. And that was because it came from the Chinese government. Before that, it was Green Fence. And even now, we're hearing new terms like Operation Blue Sky and National Sword. One of the reasons we took China out of the mix was because it's not just China. And honestly, if we were living in China and we had that much contamination in our air from the products that they were recycling, then we would want to make a change too. So it's not China's fault. And by labeling it China Sword, we were sort of putting the blame on them. The other piece of this is that there is an expectation that if we don't fix the system here, that other countries may jump in as well. So right now, we're sending materials to Vietnam or India. And those companies might as well say, hey, no, we don't want to do it either. So that's why we've adopted the term National Sword policy.
Well, I, my personal druthers are, is we should clean up our own messes and not be, but, you know. The second question is, do you remember any particulars on, I mean, I can speculate why, but can you remember any particulars on why incineration was shelved for dealing with garbage versus extending the landfill options? Do you remember the particulars on that?
There, there's still discussions going on. It is something that we are, we have discussed as a committee that we could revisit in the next several years. There are some concerns about impacts from pollution, how the system works, incineration. Yes, it's worked in other countries, but it's launching in several countries right now. And what's that overall impact? The cost is, is pretty extensive. When they did open houses to talk about this, that was one of the concerns that a lot of different residents from different communities had. In addition to, it's just unclear, you know, they're calling it waste to energy. And we are getting some energy from it, but at the end of the day, it is incineration. And in the past, that's been a concern. They say it's a new system and it's a much cleaner system, but at the end of the day, it's still incineration. And I think that is a concern. There's also feedstock that's required in order to run the incinerators. So do we have enough material to do that? So there were several different layers of concerns that came up. And at the end of the day, if we still have room at the landfill to use that space, we should utilize that. And that's where the committee went. And then in the future, we can investigate. What the committee has asked, though, is that we do take time and add additional years to really investigate something like incineration or the next steps. The other option that the deputy mayor was speaking about was exporting to other communities. And so with those different options, those all have, you know, advantages and disadvantages. And that's what the committee's been very careful to pursue and think about. Because if we're sending our waste to another community, that has impacts just as much as if, you know, we're incinerating stuff into the air. So we had to really consider those. And that's why extending the life of the current landfill seemed like a better option for right now, where we investigated those. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe? Excuse me. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So you spoke about whether to close or remodel Houghton or to find a new site for the King County Transfer Station. What steps are being taken to kind of make, reach some kind of decision on that?
Currently, we're investigating those options. The committee members have been asking King County to take additional steps sooner. But it's a very extensive process when you want to create a transfer station in a community. So they need to do some investigation and look at those. We have asked that they look at potential areas for a new Northeast Transfer Station. And they don't want to go too far in advance on that. So what we've done is just make sure that this documented in the plan that we will be having a Northeast Transfer Station. Because as of, I want to say about a year ago, we weren't even talking about that definitely being a goal in the plan. So we're excited to have that as part of this plan.
That's it for the questions? Did you have more?
Nope.
That was it? All right, cool. Good job. Let's see. Council Committee and City Manager reports? Nothing from the City Manager. Any Council Committee reports? Come on, I know you guys got, there we go. Councilmember Zornz?
Just one from LTAC. Street Sense was here two weeks ago. And I think a couple of council members sat in on it and we got to see previews to three website options. And there will be a decision made in the next, within probably, I would guess, the next month on that. One was particularly caught everyone's eye with the notion of beginning at Bothell and using Bothell as a, a launching pad, using that slogan. But it was, it was a very engaging website idea. So I'm excited to see how that, how that all comes together in the end.
Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, for the Snohomish County Health District, I just want to speak briefly about a committee that's been formed for the Health District building there. They're looking at, they were previously looking to sell the building and then relocate into a newer facilities. But just challenges through that, that has gone to the wayside. And so we've formed a special committee revisiting the topic if the Health District should just do some renovations on the existing building. In recent years, the Health District has shrunk. And so there's, they're leasing out space and they are continuing to shrink just by the demands that they have. And so they're looking at whether this building is the right building or if they should go out and find a new building. So we're, we had one meeting so far and we are scheduling another one for late September. And then also, just recently, the Health District did their second annual seven-day opioid point in time where they do their, kind of throughout Snohomish County, take a tracking of overdoses and deaths from overdose and publish those. And so that came out just in August. So Bothell just has a small footprint in Snohomish County compared to our, our number. I think we had one overdose within that seven weeks, or that seven days. And that was static from what it was last time. But there was other swings throughout the county. And it's kind of the nature of the seven-day, just point in time that it may be a particular bad point in one. And so they, they had swings and they're looking to develop reporting so that can be just real-time information and they can get longer term and have some better understanding of what's actually happening and not just this snapshot in it. So it's, it's, it's not decreasing, that's for sure. But that's my report for Snohomish County Health District.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
The, the building they're in, is that the old building that they've had a long time, the city's helped buy a long time ago and all that? Or did they move and now they want to move again?
No, that's, they've been in this building for quite a while. And so they're looking at just what kind of renovations would be necessary just to bring it up to current standards if they were to move to another building, those kind of standards that they'd be looking for. Some of the, like, they have, I don't know, it was a, it was a big number, it was like 45 individual air conditioning units on the roof because it was originally developed to be more of small units. So they had individual AC HVAC units on the roof. And they're just a variety of years and conditions and operating or not. And city of Everett was actually looking to purchase as a public works, but that kind of fell by the wayside. And so that's kind of what ramped up this whole revisit of the process on, do they want to stay or go or remodel?
Okay. I was just curious. Same, same problem they've been talking about for years.
Yeah.
Got it. Go ahead. Councilmember Raggedy?
Yeah, I was curious about the overdose. Was that treated with Narcan? Was that a death? Was that just an overdose? If you could have just an overdose.
They didn't have a lot of detailed information in this report. I think just part of the, the reporting and the HIPAA, I guess, was brought up that they don't they don't, they actually don't have where it actually occurred. They have just the location where it was reported. So, some people may have happened somewhere else, and they were brought in to the city. So, that's one of the issues that they're trying to better with just more information is where and when it happened, and what the outcome was and how it was treated, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Committees? Do you have a committee report? No way. How about Mrs. Committees?
All right. It wasn't very exciting. I just had one from ETP. It was a pretty short meeting. The first thing we discussed was an East Side Mobility Initiative. Councilmember Balducci, I think, was the instigator of this. But the idea behind it is that there are many, many projects going on in the next few years, and getting together people who can put together a schedule and understand the implications so that they're not all messing with us all at the same time. That's basically the idea. So, they're just in the beginning stages of trying to figure out how to work that out. And the second piece of it was that Congressman, sorry, Del Benny came and just answered a lot of questions that we had about how things are going. Oh, you want me to report on that, too? You were there. We met with, I was, actually, I was going to bring this up during the lobbyist agenda item, but we, James and I, Councilmember McNeil and I, met with WashDOT to discuss the, I guess, progress of the 405, 522 overpass, and I guess also extending express or toll lanes. Basically, we're looking at a $450 million price tag, and this legislative session will be key in whether or not that project happens. So, right now, we have the money for full design. We'll need another, the legislature will have to provide another $20 million for a right-of-way acquisition. And then, beyond that, of course, the construction dollars. So, there's, there are a couple of funding opportunities, or not opportunities, but funding, I guess, plans. One would be to, the legislature would have to approve of a reauthorized tolling. Then they would have to, tell me if I get any of this wrong. Then they would have to, the plan is that they would extend the definition of the corridor to, through 167. And then, those dollars would all be, I guess, and then those dollars would all be, be potentially bonded, which the legislature would also have to vote on, which is a 60% threshold. And then, once bonded, they would, they would have, I guess, there's the one project on 405 and 522, and then up to 527, but then there are several smaller projects down on 167. The other alternative, which has been discussed, is another gas tax. So, the reason I was going to bring it up during our lobbying discussion is because this is, while it may not, having a lobbyist may not, in this instance, save Bothell money, I would contend that Bothell residents would be very interested in having the 522, 405 connection redone, and we would get the same number of lanes as the rest of the corridor. So, this is going to be a really important legislative session for those who would like our traffic to be, and our traffic issues to be mitigated. So, did I miss anything? On this, on the fly. All right, that's it.
All right. Any more committee reports? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And I may ask our city manager to help me a little bit with this, because I was very impressed that our staff was nationally recognized at the conference in San Diego for their work on safe streets and sidewalks. And a poster was created that was given to 18,000 attendees. And I believe, there's one more step here. So, the, you will find Bothell's project for safe schools and walk routes study for, in their mapbook. Is that correct? So, I thought it would be important to recognize our staff and the work they did, and that they're nationally recognized as well.
All right. Any other committee reports? Seeing none. Moving on to the visitor comment period. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the mayor. And the first person I have is, and I'm sorry if I pronounce this wrong, Delete Pavar.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. How are you today? Today, I am here again to discuss about my fire impact fee. We have this ongoing discussion about the fee, about how to select the category for my banquet hall convention center. When we discussed the first time with the City of Bothell, they agreed that there is no, no such category for the convention as a banquet hall. So, we pay the fee under the art and recreation, as we discussed with the director. But we got the email last week from the City of Bothell to raise this issue again, that we did some changes on our plan, which is not true. So, they are now asking for $20,000 to pay that as, under the restaurant category. As we discussed with the director, he's agreed that art and recreation is as a example for wedding, birthdays, and anniversaries. And we did not add any extra, as we approved before, is the same thing as before. And we're still saying this is not a restaurant, and we are not opening seven days a week. And so, we still, they changed our category from art of recreation to, in the restaurant category.
Basically, this is a subject of selecting a category. We select something different, and they are selecting different on their prospective, and we disagree. So, we are not getting anywhere, except we need your help to find out the better category for our convention center.
Yes, I'll be.
We are kind of lost there, so we don't know what to do.
Okay. City manager, could you help them offline? Or do you want to help them now?
We've provided all the information. We've written a very detailed letter coming from the Community Development Director. Our determination has been made on, on the classification of the facility.
But I don't understand how come you selecting restaurant when it's located in dead-end area? And after the 5:00 PM, there's no one going on there.
I don't think it's appropriate to have the discussion at the dais.
It's not, yeah. Yeah, we don't usually have conversations.
I understand, but we are disagree, and I need somebody to help us out with this.
Okay, could you send me an email?
Okay.
My, my email address is on the website.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Andrea Penske.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This past March, my uncle, my five-year-old son and I had the privilege of backpacking a wild section of the Washington coast. Unfortunately, I was appalled by the amount of garbage on the beaches there. Since we're in the middle of nowhere, we thought, what we can do, what can we do right now? How can we leave this majestic place better than we found it? My son decided to carry home a hatchet, my uncle yards and yards of fishing rope, and myself, this bag of garbage from the coast that I dumped into that container for you to see. We could have packed out hundreds of bags of garbage that day, but this was the best that we could do. What's the best that the Bothell citizens can do? At this time, I would like to continue Michelle's vision of reusable bag ordinance. Michelle spoke to you at the Bothell City Council meeting in July, planting this seed, and I would like to continue this conversation to work with each of you to bring it to fruition. Ken Moore just passed a reusable bag ordinance on July 23rd this summer, adding its name to a list of over 18 cities in Washington State who have passed similar ordinances. Hawaii and California both have statewide bans of single-use plastic bags. We might be followers in King County, but I know we can be leaders in Snohomish County. Wouldn't you love to join the leadership in this great cause? Plastic affects human and animal health. Plastics are found in the blood and tissue of nearly all of us. Exposure to them is linked to cancer, birth defects, impaired immunity, and endocrine disruption. Plastic has been found in 60% of sea birds and 100% of sea turtles. Scientists estimate 8 million metric tons of plastic end up in our oceans each year. Eight million metric tons. This is equivalent to a garbage truck full of plastic dumping plastic into the ocean every minute. So, that will be three truckloads of plastic by the time I'm finished speaking. The average American family uses 1,500 plastic bags a year. 1,500 single-use plastic bags a year. Single-use plastics are the worst offenders to the plastic problem, including plastic bags, food packaging, and straws. Eliminating single-use plastic bags from grocery stores and switching to reusable bags when shopping will make a significant impact. City Managers, Jennifer, I thank you for all your hard work and everything you do. And if something like this hopefully will be passed, let's just, we don't need to start a whole new wheel of creative thinking. We can borrow from 18-plus cities in Washington State that have already done this, or Hawaii or California. I would love to work with each of you in implementing the small action that can make a big difference now and for future generations. And thank you for imagining the possibilities for a healthier tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeanine San Clemente.
San Clemente. Hi, my name is Jeanine San Clemente. The yellow folders that were given to you earlier have notes and references that will be referring to portions of my comments. I'm from Mothers Out Front, Mothers Out Front Puget Sound, the local arm of Mothers Out Front, a national organization of mothers and grandmothers dedicated to making a livable world for our children and grandchildren. Around 99% of the feedstock for plastic is made from petroleum and fracked gas. And manufacturing one ounce of plastic produces between one and five ounces of greenhouse gases, including carbon monoxide, hydrogen sulfide, benzene, methane, and ozone. Plastic currently accounts for at least 8% of worldwide oil production, and is expected to account for 20% of worldwide oil production use, or oil use by 2050. Over the past 60 years, plastic production has skyrocketed. In fact, one-half of all plastic produced ever has been produced in the last 13 years. In one year, we produce in weight more plastic than the weight of all humanity. Plastic bags in particular are toxic to the environment. They aren't as easy to recycle and can clog machinery and recycling facilities. It costs approximately $700 to $1,000 per tonne to remove plastic films from other recyclables. Plastic bags frequently become litter. They're light, so the wind easily carries them out of trash cans and landfills and into the environment. Once they're in the ecosystem, they're devastating to animal populations. Ocean animals in particular see them as food and kill, eat them. It is estimated that each year, 100 million marine animals are killed by plastic. These deaths are particularly gruesome, as their stomachs fill with plastic instead of the food as they starve to death. This plastic is also found in the fish and shellfish that we eat. Adult salmon ingest an estimated 39 to 91 particles of plastic each day. In Puget Sound, mussels typically have between 10 and 20 pieces of plastic in their stomachs. These ocean plastics break down into smaller pieces and act like sponges, absorbing toxic chemicals, which are then transferred to the animals that eat fish. In addition, plastic ends up in our drinking water. My group, Mothers Out Front Puget Sound, is passionate about cutting the amount of plastic used in our state, primarily because it's a significant producer of greenhouse gases. But we're also concerned about the health implications of chemicals in plastic leaching into our food, and the devastating impacts of plastic on our oceans and marine life. We currently have 369 signatures of concerned citizens who want Bothell to pass a reusable bag ordinance. One more sentence?
Go ahead.
We will be collecting more over the next several months. We are looking forward to meeting with each of you to discuss passing a reusable bag ordinance in Bothell. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Habowitz. Your address is on file. I love that. Nice.
I'm David Habowitz. And I know it's been here a while since I've been here. I want to give some feedback to some of the things that we've heard tonight. First, the presentation that we got from Snohomish County and the affordable housing. Consider that those people that you saw, he was talking about, all those statistics and all that are real people, they are the ones who are facing the $10 tolls on a daily basis, both directions. Know that the folks that live south of 522 generally see a 75-cent toll, while the folks in Snohomish County and north see $10 tolls. So, as you're looking for ways to help those people, that is one. The tolls are definitely not an equitable thing for us. There are other solutions. Along that line, we also heard mention about bonding the tolls, and I beg you, don't do that, because that locks us in with that credit card for that debt, and that they will not be able to eliminate the congestion in order to pay back the bonds. Along with that, the gas tax was mentioned, and know that half a cent increase in the gas tax would more than compensate what we're collecting in toll revenue. Half a cent. So, consider those things as you're hearing these, and you're having conversations with our state legislators, please. We're talking about the plastic bag ordinance. Actually, let me go to the, to the waste treatment. Garbage in, garbage out. We've heard that phrase. And that is, if we're looking at this process of dealing with the waste, the solid waste, consider the input to that stream rather than the output. So, worried about where do we send all this? How do we sort this? How do we recycle as much as we can? Better to reduce the use, and then you don't have to deal with those issues. So, if we look for solutions that will actually address the packaging, which is the primary part of everything we buy, if, and at your level, perhaps at the city level, you don't have this ability, but that we should be looking for those types of tools in that tool chest to reduce our consumption. Talking about the plastic bag initiative, you will have no impact on me. I've been using these bags for 26 years. They are cotton, and they might show their age, but they're, they're more close to me than some of my old jeans. And, and let me just say that also, I shop in Woodenville, because that's much more convenient for me. Because to bike into Bothell, if there were a grocery store still here, I, I don't have a safe route because of, I haven't gotten that safe sidewalk in yet. I agree with doing something about promoting the use of these, but I wanted you to consider, too, that there are alternatives to legislation and creating laws against everything. If you ever look at the distribution curve of adoption rates, you have the early adopters, that's me. We don't need any incentive or minimal incentive. Then you have the majority adopters, followed by the laggards. And litigation, excuse me, laws are greatest for those that choose not to do anything, that you have to force them. But let's also look at how we can create incentives, the carrot, rather than the stick, that we can promote these, these actions.
All right, thank you. Next is Peter Lorman.
My name is Peter Lorman. I came home today, and the Department of Transportation was in my driving doing sound readings for the 405. I live right up against the sound barrier wall on 27th Street, next to 228th. So, I just came here today to see if there was anything I could do to try, and if that extension of the express lane does happen or anything like that, that we can extend that sound wall farther south. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody I can talk to about that?
The city manager can help you right over there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. That's the end of the sign-up sheets that I have. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give public comment that didn't sign up? Going once, going twice? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, which item number was? We had AB 18-126 pulled from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to pass the remainder of the extended agenda?
Some moved.
Wow. Moved by Councilmember Ragno, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, cast your vote. Go ahead, cast your vote. Passes unanimously. I believe it was Councilmember Zornz that polled AB 18-126, replacement of personal protective equipment for firefighter bunker gear. Go ahead.
So I'm going to apologize as I go wading through this. I tried to, within the best of my ability, go through what was in the agenda packet here, and I think I understand it, but I may need some clarification. What gave me pause is another issue that's coming before the city, and it's a very, very tight budget, and it's kind of scary. I mean, for me, it's scary. And so I appreciate the thoughtful research that went into the replacement gear. I was, one question I had are, is that we have two sets of replacement gear, is that right, for both of our fire?
Correct.
Is it for both of our firehouses?
Everybody. All the firefighters have two sets.
Oh, they all have two sets?
Yes.
So I wasn't clear is, was, are both sets 10 years old, or is just one set 10 years old?
Well, one set's 10 years old, one set's seven years old. We got off track a little bit in this.
Okay.
Mayor, should we talk about that?
I think now's a good time. Sure. Councilmember Zornz, if you could just yield the floor to the, because I talked to the chief too about this item.
Yeah, totally, totally fine.
Go ahead.
So I talked to the mayor today and the city manager, and the fire department realizes the significant impacts we're looking at for the city budget. And while we would like to go ahead and replace half our bunker gear now and do it in five years, we are completely on board with doing it in pieces, like 25% per year, to get that cost down. So instead of spending the 140 now, maybe spend $35,000 to get 17 sets, and then do another 17 sets the next year to help out.
Can I have my thoughts on this?
Do you have the floor again?
Okay, yay. So, you know, better minds than I can figure out how to divvy this up. My concern is, is that we have current money to pay for X number of sets right now, and I'm all, maybe it's because it's the way we run our house. I don't mind staggering things, but I totally understand trying to buy into getting a, the big-picture lowest price possible, which I think was initially driving this.
It was. I really don't think the price would go up that much per garment if we did this. It might go up a little bit, because we're not going to have the big purchase, but if we stick with the vendor, they're going to see that long-term, and they're going to keep their costs down. So I still feel confident we'll get a very good price.
Okay.
It's just maybe not as great as before.
Okay. Well, the additional thought I had for this is that if our levy and bond passes, that's going to change our number of sets of gear that we're going to need, right?
Right.
So we'd be looking at adding to that anyway. So as long as we're staying within our budget, however, you know, you guys think that we, you know, need to split the percentages of buy now and save for later, I'm fine with. I just wanted to stay within the dollars that we have now.
Appreciate it. And I'm completely comfortable with the plan going forward of breaking up to, say, 25% per year. That still gives us a buffer year, so if 25% in four years, we theoretically have 100% of the gear turned over. So if we went, you know, every five years, you know, staggering five years apart, so we always have a fresh kind of set of gear, that still gives us one year to catch up. If we have added people or something happens, we'd still have it, we could still buy a few sets of gear in those off-years.
Okay, so one question.
Yeah.
If we go that way, does that guarantee that we won't have firefighters who are using a set that's 11, 12 years old and past its tenure, what I would consider pulling?
No.
Okay.
But however, right now, we're in that situation with several people anyway.
Okay. So we could take care of those needs immediately, but not putting anybody else at risk?
Correct. That's the plan, is to go through, take a systematic approach, get the absolute oldest gear replaced first, and just work our way through. And every year, we just go through and find the oldest and replace those and go through.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
I appreciated that you pulled this too, because I had the same issue with the new business item, the $2.5 million hole that we have, potential hole for the N Fund balance that definitely caught my attention, and we're going to talk about that in the next agenda item. So to wrap this up though, do you want us to not make a decision on this and have it come back as a separate item? Okay. So we'll just pull it and leave it off, and then we'll expect it back soon? Or can we vote to have only 25%? We don't need a formal vote on a motion. Oh, no, okay. All right, everybody good with that? It's like, yep. Okay, so that completes that. We're on to new business, AB 18-129, contract with Gordon Thompson Honeywell Governmental Affairs for State Government Relations Services from October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019. I believe we have the assistant city manager there, so, hi.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the city council. You have two items for your consideration before you this evening. I'll address each one of them in sequence. The first one is a proposed contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for Professional Government Relations Services, specific to the state legislature in Olympia for the upcoming session that starts in January. I'll speak briefly as to the contract. What will come after that, though, regardless of your decision on the contract, is a discussion of your legislative priorities. And so this is just, we're going to have a much longer conversation on this in October, but this is simply for you to think, if there are pressing issues that you've been thinking about already, it's an opportunity for us to hear that from you. So that will be the second item, regardless of your decision on the first. So with regard to the contract, the background behind this item is that staff heard direction from council in April that you were interested in enlisting the service as a professional lobbyist for state government relations. We heard that in April, and so we went out and sought recommendations for lobbyists that have specialized in services to other municipalities and getting recommendations from staff in other cities. We interviewed two that sounded like they fit the bill, and so the staff recommendation and the proposed contract for your consideration today is with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. And I'll just introduce our folks here, because they are in the audience. So we have Brianna Murray, who's vice president, and we also have Shelley Heldar, who is a government affairs consultant. So this would be the team, if you choose to enter into this contract, this would be the team working with you. So we heard the previous direction in April. A couple of notes on state relations. This is one of the opportunities for a service that can bring money back into the city. So there are not many of those. We have a lot of things where we're providing services, but the opportunity to bring funds back in is pretty unusual. As well, as many of you know, with your connections, we do have a very supportive delegation for Bothell, so they generally know what we're looking at and want to be helpful. The third thing is that in Washington State, as opposed to some others, in my previous work in Colorado, I can tell you the state is much less of a factor. Regardless of how the council chooses to do this, the state government is a really big force for funding and for policy here in Washington State. So the recommendation from staff in bringing you this option for pursuing professional state government relation services is a way of, we believe, professionally handling that portfolio in the way that we had heard you give direction. Now, as you've seen from the agenda bill, this is given in the context of a stated deficit in the City General Fund of approximately 2.5 million. So the question before you today is to think if this is an additional item that you would want to use reserves to pursue, or if, or not. Three options for your consideration. So one of them would be to maintain the status quo, which is decide not to enter into a contract for a lobbyist. Because of staffing resources, that will get you about the same program as we had last year. So we, if you remember, was the first city's, city's first legislative agenda in a while, and then we went to city action days, and then wrote some letters as requested on items. So I would anticipate a very similar program. If you do not enter into a contract, you will get approximately the same abilities of staff to meet those needs as you had last year. The 2019 year, I should also say, is the first of a two-year biennium. So 2019 is a big year for budget for the state. So there's a lot of funding, more funding opportunities in the first year than there in the second. So that's option one, is what I would say is the status quo, which is not, choosing not to hire a lobbyist, getting approximately the same program and abilities as last year. Approving the contract? I want to make a note that this particular item does come at an odd time, and I understand that. Because lobbyists work, and I'll let them speak to their own abilities, but they work to prepare for an upcoming legislative session. So there is work for several months ahead of time, which is the reason that we have brought this for your consideration today and not waited for the budget or for annual budgeting to start in January. It's difficult to find where to start that first contract if you haven't had a lobbyist for a while, because they either work through the middle, from the middle of the summer to the middle of the next summer, or fall through fall. So the timing of this is a little challenging, and I understand that. So if you were to approve the contract using general fund reserves, that would allow them to get started right away. They would be present at your discussion of legislative priorities in more depth and could help with forming the platform. But if you choose not to, staff will do our best to help you with that conversation in the meantime. So you do have those two options before you. Your third option is deferring a larger decision on their contract until you've had an opportunity to have a larger budget discussion as part of your budget process. So a third option for your consideration would be that staff can work on preparing the documents and setting the platform as we can for the next couple of months. And then if you choose during the budget process to make this a priority for a professional state government relations platform, then you could add that into the budget, and it would start in 2019. And they've indicated this would work for them as well. So those are three options there. I'm happy to take any questions you may have for me, or...
It's peaceful up here. I guess I'll go then. It's not really, well, one question. Because of the McLeary decision, the operating budget did go up, so this is kind of a watershed year for capital, because capital matches the operating budget by a certain percentage.
May I?
Yes, please.
That's correct. And we're happy to give an introduction of us and what we're about, but you've assessed the funding opportunity accurately. We're advising our clients at this stage to develop bold capital funding requests. We're expecting it to be the largest in state history and to take advantage of that opportunity.
Sure, it'd be a great time to have a lobbyist. But we have an issue in front of us here. We haven't been updated on our financials since the fourth quarter of last year, and what we heard then was 2.5 million in the red, and then that has been brought back to our attention in this exact council memo. So you're going to get a little bit of this, I know about your firm, I think you guys do great work. I've heard a lot of really good things actually from senators and representatives about you guys. So nothing personal on my end with your work or this contract. I can't approve, I'm not comfortable approving it right now, just because of, we need to get on top of what's going on with this $2.5 million deficit. So that's kind of where I'm at, and I don't know where the rest of the council is at, so I'll leave it at that and let you guys chime in. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. And first of all, would you provide the names, Tori, of who we are speaking with?
Sure, yes. We have Brianna Murray, Vice President at Gordon Thomas Honeywell, and then we also have Shelley Heldar, Government Affairs Consultant.
Thank you. I somewhat support deferring at this point. I think that we have a levy coming and our bond issue, and I just think we have to kind of really understand where we're going to be, and this is, would be important to make that decision after November.
Anybody else like to weigh in? Deputy Mayor?
I'm really torn about this. While we do have a supportive delegation, it was one of those in the delegation who suggested that we get ourselves a lobbyist, so for whatever that's worth. As I said before, my biggest concern with this legislative session is the 405-522 interchange. And while that won't save us budget money, I can guarantee you, the people in Bothell care about whether that project happens or not. I was going to say, if we choose not to fund this, I'd like to see a plan for how we're going to tackle and lobby this issue, and it sounds like there is no plan and there's no intention or opportunity to make a different plan, so that's disappointing. Yeah, I'm not, I can see both sides. I just, this is a big funding year, and Bothell has sat at the wayside for many, many years, and so that's my biggest concern. We basically got the dregs of sound transit. We're always seeming to be on the receiving end of close to zero, and so we know what doesn't work. And it seems like this would be a good year to try, to see what could work for us, so...
Councilmember Agnew?
$2.5 million. $54,000 doesn't seem like a lot, when what's the return going to be? I think we have an opportunity here to spend a little bit of money and to get a lot more in return. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't look at this. I understand the budget, but if I think about what everybody's saying, is that there's going to be more funding, there's going to be more money available, and yet we don't have anybody to talk for us. We don't have anybody to bang the shoe on the table and say, Bothell really needs this. I would support taking the money out of the general reserves and funding this, personally.
This side, there we go. Councilmember Zornz?
Of course, I'll have something to say. One, I'm a penny pincher, and I'm always looking for, after raising five children, pushing ourselves a little extra hard if it's going to give us a great gain. And I have a similar point of view of 56 grands, a chunk of change, but compared to, you know, 2 million, is it a smart investment? And it looks like, short-term, a little bit of pain, long-term, a whole lot of gain. So I'm leaning towards, you know, taking this risk, because I think that it's going to matter to Bothell in a pretty significant way. The one question I do have is that if we move forward with this, this group also represents other cities in the area? So my question is, what if you have two competing cities that want to be at the same trough? How do you manage that?
Alphabetical order.
Sure. And maybe, just listening to your dialogue, maybe it's helpful to provide you all with some background on our firm and our approach and what we're all about. So if you don't mind, I'd like to take the moment to do that, and I think it also answers your question. Because our firm does, specializes in representing municipalities, and we are very successful and have a great track record in advocating for a lot of cities throughout the state. To directly answer your question, before I expand upon that and give Shelley an opportunity as well, our goal and objective in working with all of you is to position the requests that you all identify as being your top priorities for success in Olympia. That's a lot of working directly with your legislative delegation, working with state agencies, transportation has been mentioned, and working collaboratively with DOT in crafting an appropriate request. So it's less about, it's less than you would think about individual communities competing with one another. It's not a direct one-to-one competition. It's really about, how can we take your project that you identify and make it look compelling for investment and for state dollars? I will note, and I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to expand upon this, but in our representation of communities throughout the state, we've been able to show that return on investment or that track record of success within one legislative biennium for every municipality we've worked with. So we've not had a client not be successful in securing their funding or having a legislative win, once they've worked with us. And so I think I'll turn it over to Shelley to just expand upon that concept a bit more.
Yeah, so the return on investment has been discussed this evening, and I just want to point out that it is something that we really pride ourselves on, because we represent municipalities. We understand that you all sitting up there have to make votes that you're held accountable then to the citizens and the taxpayers of Bothell. And so we want to make sure that if you're choosing to make this investment, that you're going to see a return on that investment. And while there is no guarantee, we do have a very strong track record. Just as an example, one of our clients, the city of Lakewood, for every dollar that they invested in their legislative program... invested in their legislative program this last legislative cycle, they received $15 in return through direct appropriations from the state. So it's just an example of the type of return on investment that you could see, and a lot of that has to do with the work that we do in advance of the legislative session. So a lot of people think that the legislative session, January through March or January through April, is when all the action happens, but really, it's right now. It's leading up to the legislative session, when legislators have a little bit more capacity than they do during session, when state agencies are developing their proposed budgets, and when really policy decisions are being made through the development of task force recommendations and legislative proposals. So as Tori mentioned, this is a little bit of an awkward timing, and we understand that you guys have budget constraints. But there is a reason that we're bringing this forward as a recommendation to staff right now. It's to prepare you to be the most successful that you can be heading into this new biennium.
And it doesn't preclude us all from working together at a future time. However, we wanted to bring this forward to you, because if you want to be successful, we want to get started right away. And that's just the method that we've used and been successful with in the past, and that's why we brought it before to you. Happy to answer any questions or talk more about who we are or our firm or our background, but I think those kind of get to the direct discussion items you guys have brought up.
Are we ready for a vote, or what? You guys want to... Do you have more questions? Councilmember McAuliffe, or Councilmember Zornis, were you done? Okay. Councilmember McNeil?
I'm leaning towards supporting this. And the reason I'm leaning towards supporting this is because I've seen the power of what we can do with lobbyists in Olympia. I had the opportunity to go to Action Days for the last three years, or two and a half years, and I've been on council two times, two years I've been up there. And some of the most successful lobbyists actually were across from us this last year, now works for the city of Renton. And listening to him and how he lobbies, and I believe he was with Redmond as well for a period of time, it's unbelievable what you can do when you have somebody who's focused on it and continuing to work on it on a daily basis. We are... Our legislators here locally in the first are very supportive of us. That is true. But there is bigger dollars available to us, and I think if we do it the right way, we can get some of those dollars back. When I was elected, the one thing that was told to me is your dollars go out, and it's our job as legislators to bring those dollars back into our community. So I think if you guys can do that and do that successfully for us, I think it's money well spent on ensuring, you know, I'd love to see the one for 15 here in Bothell as well, so... Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
I think I am... I mean, I am echoing what I've heard the last few people is, I think this is need to be viewed as an investment towards our projects that we're trying to accomplish, and if we can get the payback for this, that'll just pay back this upfront payment and help us in the long run with funding other projects that we'd have to use general funds and capital funds for. So I'm supportive of this motion.
Do you want to make a motion? It might be your first motion ever, right? No, you mean, okay.
Let's see. So... Make the motion.
Councilmember Agnew can help you out.
Consider authorizing the city manager to execute in substantially the same form as presented, professional service agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for the 2018-19 state government relations services, and to use the money out of the reserve funds.
Second, by Councilmember Agnew, second, and by Councilmember Olson to... I don't even have that thing in front of me. I think everybody knows what it was. Affirmative would be to approve the $54,000 expense out of the general fund reserve. Is there any discussion on the motion? I just want to send a shot across the bow. I am a no, and I'm going to continue to be a no for any expenditure that the city puts in front of me until we get the $2.5 million resolved. All right. Go ahead, place your vote. Passes five to two. Councilmember McAuliffe and myself in the negative. It passes. All right. Thank you. On to the next one. Oh, that's right. Here's the next one, too. AB 18-130 legislative program. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the city council. If it works for you, I'm actually happy to hand this discussion off to your new lobbyists. They've prepared a presentation to brief you on some of the factors for consideration and then start the discussion.
Welcome on board.
Yeah, this isn't awkward at all. No, in all honesty, we are excited to be working with all of you and to partner with all of you, and your city staff has really been excellent in working with us to this point. Our goal for tonight's discussion, and how do I switch slides? There we go. Our goal for tonight's discussion is to provide you with some information that you already know, so an overview of what to expect for the 2019 legislative session. And it was great to hear from your guys' discussion that you are paying attention to what is going on in Olympia, which I think will make this easy for you to comprehend and utilize. But I think the key here is to figure out, how do you take the political context of what to expect in the 2019 session and build that into a successful legislative agenda and legislative program? And then discuss the timeline for how to do that in a timely and effective manner to make sure you are well-prepared to take advantage of the funding opportunities this next session. So we're going to focus first on some information that may seem like review or, hey, I already know this, but just know we're going to dovetail that into how do you leverage that to be part of your legislative program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to talk about what to expect this upcoming session.
Okay. So as I'm sure many of you are aware, the August primary resulted in quite a big win for Democrats, both in the House and the Senate. And really, what that means is that come the November election, the outcome of that election will determine how great the majority is in both the House and the Senate. I think we can fairly easily conclude that Democrats will have the majority in both the House and the Senate. The November election will determine how significant that majority is. In the House, based on the primary results, there is the potential that Democrats could gain a supermajority, meaning that if they wanted to, they could pass on... Pass bond measures, increase taxes. Votes that typically require a supermajority are the ones that are most controversial. Now, unless that supermajority exists in the Senate as well, they would still require bipartisan support. But it's just to give you a sense of the type of political climate that could be existing in Olympia come January. Also, on the November ballot, there'll be four initiatives. On the slide that shows there that there'll be three, but the fourth is the initiative on the use of deadly force. And this was Supreme Court recently decided that this is going to be on the November ballot. And I don't know, for those of you who have tracked this issue, whether or not it passes on the ballot, I would anticipate both this item as well as the other three items that are initiatives will be items that the legislature considers come January. If these initiatives pass by the people, they... In order for the legislature to amend them, it does require a two-thirds supermajority of both chambers. That's within the first two years. After the first two years, then the legislature can change them with a simple majority. So that's a little bit of the political climate for what we expect in 2019. And... Oh, yes, thank you. The second bullet up there is, in addition to the legislative races that we see where there could be incumbents that are unseated, there were 16 legislators that decided not to run for reelection this year. And that is usually in every few years, we do see kind of a wave of new faces. This is a fairly large wave of new legislators in Olympia. So not only will this require a good amount of educating new legislators, but there will also be a lot of new faces in leadership. The Senate Majority Leader was one of the members. Senate Democrat Majority Leader is the one that... One of the members that decided not to run for reelection, as well as the House Minority Leader. So in both parties, both chambers, there'll be new people in leadership.
I think that extends over to the allocation of funding as well, because you have longtime House Transportation Committee Chair Judy Clivern not running for reelection, and she was one of the key members in crafting the 2015 Connecting Washington package. So without her there, there's no longer that institutional knowledge at the same level that she brought to the table, which will make transportation discussions different and interesting.
So moving on to talking a little bit about the basics of this upcoming session. It is the first of a two-year legislative biennium. So as you may be aware, the legislature operates on a two-year cycle. Really, the primary objective for the legislature this coming session is to adopt their capital operating and transportation budgets, scheduled to last 105 days. But as I'm sure you know, there is always the potential for special sessions if they do not finish their work on time and the governor calls them back. I think it was touched on earlier that in light of the McCleary decision and the change for how the state funds K-12 education, the operating budget is going to be very significant. And despite increased revenues, they do anticipate that it will be a tight budget, which will, I think, or we think that it will spur conversations about tax structure and potentially bring up conversations about not only carbon tax, but capital gains tax, which was an issue that was introduced to last session, and the conversation was started. And then in light of the operating budget being so large, we do anticipate this to be the largest capital budget in state history. And the majority of the capital budget is allocated towards K-12 education, but there is a large chunk of that budget that is set aside for local and community projects. Those are projects that cities and local jurisdictions, community centers compete for for funding, and that's the bucket of funds that we've been successful in helping our clients secure funding from. In addition to all the conversations about budgets, there will also be thousands of bills introduced. Because this is a new legislative biennium, any bill that was considered last session is now dead, and any new bill will need to be introduced. There are hundreds of bills that will impact city business, and so part of us working with you this evening and then in the coming months is identifying those issues that are most important to Bothell and making sure that we weigh in on those issues. It was mentioned earlier that city staff may not have the capability to be in Olympia on a day-to-day basis, and that is really one of the things that you are gaining by having us, is we are in Olympia, have a daily presence down there, and it's really important when you're having conversations about policy changes that you have someone advocating for you on that daily basis.
I'll just... I'll make a note about capital and transportation funding. I think one of the things we've learned is oftentimes cities struggle with how to engage in those two budgets. Unlike your capital budget, which includes all kinds of transportation projects, the legislature only funds transportation projects out of the transportation budget, and all other bricks and mortar projects are funded out of the capital budget. There's this very clean line between those two budgets that doesn't exist in city world that exists in the state legislative world. As we work with you to develop your legislative agenda, we're going to be advising on where that line is and how to build projects, requests, in that honor those lines. Shelley talked about the robust capital budget. The transportation budget doesn't look as rosy as the capital budget. There is a $200 million shortfall anticipated for the 2019-21 legislative biennium. With that being said, I'm very anxious to see with what the governor's proposed transportation budget looks like, because I know that there are some projects ahead of schedule and some projects behind schedule. If I were betting, I would say that that 200 million shortfall likely gets resolved when you line up all of the different projects and their timelines. And then it was referenced earlier, a discussion about gas tax. There is some discussion of a mini package, and already project advocates swirling around trying to get access to the funds that would be generated by that mini package. There's likely to be a very robust discussion around tolling. I don't think it will be specific to the 405 corridor. I think it will be broad tolling policy that includes the 405 corridor, but we're anticipating that to be a highlight this upcoming session. So just a comment there about capital and transportation.
So there are some issues that have either... Discussions have begun in previous sessions, or we anticipate the conversation to happen in the 2019 session. And these are a few of those topics. As mentioned previously, tax structure, we do anticipate that this would be something that is heavily discussed in the 2019 session, in light of the political context as well as the operating budget and some of the more ambitious goals that some legislators may have. Mental health funding, this is continuing... This is... Earlier this evening, you guys had a report on opioid response, and really, mental health funding has become a really integral part of that conversation. And the state's requirement to fund ample mental health is becoming more apparent. In addition, the federal government decertified Western State Hospital, which is a $54 million hit to the state budget. So there'll be some significant conversations around mental health funding, as well as policies as for how the state treats individuals who have been deemed not competent to stand trial, as referenced in the True Blood decision. As well as affordable housing, this is a conversation that's been happening for several sessions, and there have been some policies that have been adopted in past years. House Bill 2437 is a bill that was introduced last year. The concept is allowing jurisdictions to receive a credit against the state sales tax to use towards capital projects, and then those projects would... Those projects would be only for affordable housing, basically. So it's a... Basically, a government... It would be done through a housing authority, and it's basically a government response to the lack of supply. Other policy issues meant to allow the market to supply that housing are addressed in the Condominium Liability Act, potentially changing density requirements. And these are just some of the conversations that are happening right now about affordable housing legislation come the 2019 session. Breonna touched on transportation, so I won't belabor that. Another issue, though, that will resurface is the discussion around rural broadband. This is something that the governor's office has been working on. They were very adamant that something happened last session, and ultimately, nothing made it across the finish line, so they've been working over the interim in order to develop a plan to ensure that rural broadband is accessible statewide. Dovetailed in that conversation, those separate issues, is the topic of small cell network facilities. There is a push to have small cell network facilities mandated, essentially the state saying, hey, every local jurisdiction, you have to have... You know, you have to allow these small cell network facilities in your cities and towns. And on behalf of other local jurisdictions, along with AWC, we have been arguing local control and local control and local decisions are important, and cities are the stewards of local resources, and we can't give those up freely. So it's just a little bit of that conversation, and there are dozens of other topics, but those are the few that we wanted to highlight for you tonight.
I think one of the things that you all and us and city staff need to discuss as a collective in terms of developing your legislative program is what items do you want highlighted as City of Bothell priority? What items are broad city issues that you want to weigh in on? And what issues do you want the Association of Washington Cities to really be taking the lead on? And figuring out which of your priorities, legislative priorities or interests, fall in each of those buckets? So Shelley just went through kind of a whole series of your hot and emerging legislative topics. Some of those, for you all, you may say, yep, that's really important, there's not really a Bothell-specific element to it, so we're going to let the association carry the water. And we want to go over those issues, as well as highlight for you what the association is focusing on, because it's really good context as you try and figure out where to spend your political capital. Do you want to spend your political capital on affordable housing, or do you want, you know, to work through the Association of Washington Cities in advocating for that issue? So just very briefly, AWC has identified their preliminary legislative priorities. Those include supporting affordable housing and some of the proposals that Shelley mentioned, increasing funding to the Criminal Justice Training Commission for more law enforcement training classes, pursuing economic development tools, encouraging sustainable funding to the Public Works Assistance Account. the Public Works Assistance Account, another infrastructure funding, and securing funding for fish culverts. So again, all these issues sort of build into how do you develop your legislative agenda, and what are you really focusing on? Which is a good segue to the next slide, which is, we want to start preparing now. We know that some of these issues are emerging. We have election results coming in November, but really, the discussion with you all is, what does your community need from the state legislature? Whether it's 405, or park funding, or other capital funding needs. Identifying those early allows us to begin advocating early. You don't need to wait for election results to know exactly how big that Democrat majority will be in order to establish your top priorities especially. We want to begin meeting with your legislative delegation in December. I think Shelley has even already held a time on their calendar to make sure that you guys are going to be well-positioned and have their ear leading into session. And then during the legislative session, we are there on a daily basis. We are your eyes, ears, voices. We quite literally spend more time in the Capitol than any city staff ever could. But we also really encourage you all to make visits to Olympia, and we consider it our job to make sure that your visits to Olympia are very valuable, and that you're meeting with the right people, saying the right messages, and all at the right time. And just a quick note, that is not always during city action days. It's a long drive down to Olympia, but city action days is also when every other mayor and city council member are in town, and it may not be the right time in the process to really hammer home the City of Bothell message. So all of that to take into context as we move forward.
And so as we are providing you all food for thought as you consider items that you may want to bring forward as the city's legislative priorities, we wanted to highlight some of the items to consider. As we work with clients to develop their legislative agenda, we recommend that you adopt a biennial agenda that aligns with the state's biennial budget. That's really how legislators think, it's how we've been successful with clients in the past, so that's something that we would recommend. Additionally, adopting a legislative agenda that has just top two to three priorities, these are issues that are really Bothell-specific, that are the items where you're going to see that return on investment. So this could be a capital funding request, or a transportation request, or an operating budget request, or a policy change, but really, specific items for the City of Bothell. If there are other issues that the city is, that cares about, would like to weigh in on, for example, affordable housing, maybe it's not a top priority issue, but it's still something that, as a council and as a community, you know the citizens of Bothell care about, that would be something that we would recommend is included in the policy manual, which is a document that lists various issues that you all care about and you would like us to weigh in on, but Bothell's not going to be the lead on that particular issue.
I think the other thing to think about is, the audience for your legislative agenda is your local legislative delegation. Your audience for the policy manual is really your direction to us and to city staff of all of the issues in addition to your top priorities that you want us to be monitoring, engaging, and following. Your local legislative delegation, as it's been said many times, are excellent. You guys lucked out. They also only have so much bandwidth. So helping them identify, here are the two to three things that we're going to evaluate whether or not this legislative session is successful by, is very helpful to them.
And then some of the other items to consider is consistency. So if you have a really large project, that it's something that remains on your legislative agenda year after year, that maybe you receive funding every year, but that you continue to show that this is a, this is a project that the City of Bothell is committed to, and that you're going to see through to completion. Another really important one that may not seem very obvious is full support of council and community. I know there are some issues that may be a little more contentious than others, and your legislative delegation is really eager to support the issues that are, have full support of council and the community, so that there's no angst about the issue that they're pursuing on your behalf. And then, just in light of particular budget requests, our recommendation is that if you are going to make a budget request, that you prioritize one budget request per budget, so one operating, one transportation, or one capital budget request. That's really one of the ways to be most successful, is that you don't compete against yourself when you're going in, making your pitch. Some things to consider specifically related to a capital budget request. As mentioned before, 2019, the odd number year, is the beginning of the state's biennium. So this is where in the largest capital budget will be adopted. The following year, in 2020, there'll be, hopefully, a supplemental capital budget. It'll be much smaller. So really, this year is the year to go big. Projects that are good for consideration for capital funding requests, as mentioned before, have community support, they're visible, this is why parks projects tend to be well-positioned. One of the other items is if they have partners, if there's a local community organization that supports this request, that's very helpful, because then you have even more community buy-in. And then other things to consider, is there a benefit or a nexus to the state? So one of the things that some communities have been pursuing is fish culvert funding. The state has an obligation to clear, or to create fish passage and restore and replace fish culverts. So partnering with the state to do that and committing as a local jurisdiction to do that is an example of a request that would have a benefit or a nexus to the state. And then other, does it create jobs? Is there, does it have any type of environmental benefit? These are all items that the capital budget writers consider when they're looking at the list of options of capital budget funds to fund.
And as we move on to transportation funding, I think my comments will apply to both, and that is, the dollar amount you're asking for and the messaging around the project matter a lot. And those are conversations that we look forward to having with all of you as we dive deeper into this and learn more about what types of projects are on the radar. But a really good example is, I recently saw a jurisdiction asking for $6 million for a parking garage. That is not an ideal funding request, both for the dollar amount and how it's being presented. Now, a one and a half million dollar request for downtown revitalization, of which the parking garage is part of, is a more compelling request. So we're prepared to advise on how to take the projects that you have and make them more conducive to the political climate that we're seeing.
When it comes to transportation, in 2015, the state adopted the 16-year package that funded projects through each biennium. So one of the items that transportation budget writers consider is, if this project, if we agree that this project should be funded, the question then is, when should it be funded? Should it be funded this biennium or in future bienniums? So specifically for transportation projects, if there is any type of public safety concern or any aspect of the project that creates more urgency in funding it, that's something to consider, because it will increase the likelihood that the project is funded sooner rather than later. And then, it was mentioned earlier, 405. This is an example of, the last bullet that's referenced there is, transportation funding requests that would have regional support. Hopefully, any 405 request would have regional support. And while there may not be a direct return on investment to the city budget, it would potentially benefit the City of Bothell residents and the entire area. So there's different ways to look at the return on investment for city dollars.
Yeah, I think on transportation funding, when you're talking about the return on investment, you can either take a city transportation project and figure out, how do you get the state invest into that city transportation project, which would otherwise be a city obligation? So you're seeing that return on investment immediately in city coffers. Based on some of the discussion this evening, it sounds like, rather, the priority for the City of Bothell is to ensure that the state system is functioning properly. And so you'd like to see the investments into the state system, and the investments would not come to the city, they would go into DOT to make those changes. And you're really advocating for DOT to take certain actions. And both of those are acceptable paths forward, just two different ways of looking at how do you structure a transportation funding request. So I think we've developed a timeline with city staff to help you all get prepared. We'd really like to hear from you, any preliminary ideas that you have on your legislative priorities for this upcoming session, with the idea that this is the first of many conversations to help you all engage this next session.
So you just want us to throw some spaghetti at the wall?
Sure.
Okay.
Brainstorming's great.
Could you back the slides up to the list that you started with before the AWC list? There we go. Okay. I hate going first. Does anybody want to go first? Any ideas off the top of your head? She wants 405 to get fixed. Anything else? Riveting. There we go. Councilmember's turn.
One other thing that I was thinking that's sort of connected to 405, but we need some help with, is 527 accessing up to 405, that we have some narrow constraints. It used to be Delanda, what is it now? But do you know the area that I'm talking about, where buses cannot navigate up 527 because of how narrow it is? That this might be a place for us to advocate for that.
Deputy Mayor.
We have designed funding for that already. Through PSRC. Yeah, but we have to design it first.
Did you have any others? Councilmember's turn? Okay. Anybody else? There we go. This side's going now. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Thank you. I think what is really important is, when we ask for our transportation funding, we have to look at how that, how economic development is part of that, because Bothell is growing with our high-tech corridor and up in the Canyon Park area, and we're also growing in our apartments and our condos. And so our people need to get to work, our people need to get back home, and in order for us to have a strong economics, a development in our, in our region, we need to be sure that our transportation package works. But my one question is, isn't the toll lanes for 405, isn't that already included in a timeline, in a package?
So the 405 toll lanes were authorized for the north end of 405. There's some discussion about whether they need to be reauthorized. There is also tolling on 405 South that has not yet been authorized, as well as permanent authorization of the 167 hot lanes, and tolling on 167 and 509, referred to as the Puget Sound Gateway Project. So there's a larger discussion around tolling policy on all of those different corridors that's likely to occur this upcoming session, and 405 in its entirety will be discussed as part of it.
But I did think when Governor Inslee opened up the shoulder going on 522. 405, I'm still on 405, yeah. When he opened up the shoulder, there was a plan at that time to actually improve that toll lane between Bothell and Linwood. Nothing that you know of?
I mean, we have not been focused on your specific funding requests. And there, I mean, I know there are plans on how to make improvements on that quarter. My understanding is you guys are also very interested in the 522 to 405 interchange, and how to relieve the congestion right around that interchange, just based on observing various requests and comments from your legislative delegation.
Or the lineup of cars waiting to do it.
You're right, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Something near and dear to me is parks and open space, especially in the north end of our city. Making sure we have ample funding for that would be critical. On the transportation piece, WashDOT just gave us an update, and part of that update was the shoulder running lane. But also, there's the piece between 527 and I-5 that's not funded at this time. So that is going to remain an issue in the future until that piece is fixed. But parks and open space are my big thing.
Are there any projects in particular that you're interested in, in that category?
I'm going to defer to the city manager and hold it that, but yes, parks and open space are big for me.
Deputy Mayor.
So I know in the last budget, we requested, in the operating budget, we requested money for the Canyon Park Master Plan, and I think we still don't have money for that project. So that would be high on my list, and it ties into you talking about jobs, because we're hearing from a lot of the businesses up there, they'd like to expand, but they can't or won't because of traffic, so that all kind of ties in with the 405 as well. And then I know we also requested, we have a federal grant for the pedestrian bridge at Bothell Landing, which is a $4 million. We don't currently have the matching money for that, so that's a million that I think we also requested and didn't get last session. So those are kind of leftovers from last session that I think are still important. And I echo, parks always.
So one of the ones that, I wanted to go back to this one, just to see, you have a HB 2437, I don't know if that was the Condominium Liability Act or the density requirements. The, I would say, the density one, we're not feeling real loving to the state about trying to take land use planning decisions out of the local governments. But the Condominium Liability Act, I would imagine you've got just about everybody behind that one, so I don't know how, if we need to pile on and put our efforts behind that, but I think that's a huge thing for downtown Bothell. We've got a lot of units going in, and they're all apartments, so nobody can really start out, you know, a starter home is $950,000 are the only ones that are people building right now. So if there was something a little more affordable to get people to started, start down the path of owning their home, I think it would be a really good thing for our state, so. I wanted to echo, the deputy mayor stole my thunder on the Canyon Park Master Plan. If you guys can crack that nut, that would be amazing, because we've been trying, I think, for two at least years to try to get operations, operating money. It is, well, we can talk about why that's important later. And then we, the last thing, it's been brought to our attention that there's fire station improvements needed. We have a levy that's going to go out, hope for the best, plan for the worst, but we're going to need to do something with our fire stations, as well as we contract services in a fire station that's actually in a fire district, so it gets a little muddy there about us doing improvements on their district station, but our staffers are being staffed out of there, and it's inadequate conditions, so I don't know how we can potentially get some capital dollars to try to renovate the stations. It's more, it's more so about them living in quarters that are close to their equipment, things that are contaminated with stuff from fires, and how you open the door to apparatus bay and it hits a kitchen, or it hits the refrigerator in the kitchen, you know, when you're coming in from the equipment bay, so. Those, just kind of off the top of my head, are some of interest. But these ones you have here too, these are really important to us too. Affordable housing, mental health funding, the epidemic, I don't know, I thought that President Trump did something where there's federal funding if states matched, and only a few states have kind of taken up the opportunity to get the federal funding and having the match, and so it seems like a good idea if we have money to do it, to try to get that federal funding to come to our state. That's it for me. Councilmember's turn.
I think just on the fire department, I think, planning for the best and hoping for the best and planning for the worst, the south, the need for a new fire station on the south end was a need that's been identified, just as a new building for the capacity on where we're growing there. But that was just one that I remember that keeps popping up, and we have no, no plan for it, or, you know, even in best case scenario right now.
Anything else? Does that give you enough fodder? Okay.
Excellent. That's a great beginning to the dialogue, and I think we're hoping to continue the discussion more on October 16th.
And I guess it would be great to understand a little more about kind of the AWC's priorities versus our own individual priorities and like, because I think we end up putting a lot of effort behind something that doesn't need a whole bunch more momentum, you know? So like, if you could help us navigate through those things so we don't waste each other's time, that'd be awesome. And I'll come down to Olympia, I'm known to do that, not on, I don't like legislative days. I go otherwise, so.
You're welcome all days.
Okay, we're good?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, everybody okay? We can do this hopefully quickly. AB 18-131, Council- AB 18-131, council liaison to the Shorelines Board. You guys okay to not take a break and just deal with this? Okay. So, city clerk, you have the floor. Nice headphones.
Well, on February 6, council appointed members to various boards and commissions to serve as a liaison, to report back to the full council on their activities. We recently reinstated the Shorelines Board, so we are asking tonight for council to appoint a member to serve as a Shorelines Board liaison.
Is anybody interested in doing that?
There's a list in front of you of who serves on what. If you'd like me to go over it, I can.
I imagine we're all okay, we just need to volunteer. Is anybody interested? Oh, you got two.
So I'm actually not interested. However, I wanted to ask the mayor if he'd be willing to do it, because it's a shorelines thing. And I think it's very critical with the work that you've done with Wyre 8, that we have somebody representing us as a liaison that understands it. So that's just my take on it.
I'd do it only if I could give up the Landmark Preservation Board, because I just have, you guys don't want to hear my diatribe at the dais about my personal life, but I don't have bandwidth to take on it, too. Yep, same here.
So if the council wanted to make any changes to the appointments that you made to the existing committees, you could give us that direction, but because you did it as a council action on an agenda bill, we just would need to bring that back. But that's super easy to do, we could put it on consent, you just can't make that decision tonight.
Attorneys.
So along with that, I would also, since Liam has experience with landmark, and I know Liam wants something else to do, because he's not on one now.
I've already been poking him over here. Try it.
It's hard to horse trade when we can't commit to the other end of it, but you willing to take on landmark board? All right, I'll do shoreline. Everybody okay with that? We can't make a formal decision, though, until the attorneys can write it up and bring it back in a formal document.
You can make the formal appointment to the shoreline board tonight.
Okay.
And then we would just bring an agenda bill back that would switch out the mayor and council member Olson on the landmark board.
You better not. I think we should do them both at the same time. No, okay, sir.
We could do that as well.
I'm kidding.
That's fine as well.
I know where he lives. All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion to appoint the mayor to the Shorelines Board as a liaison.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember McNeil, second by the deputy mayor, to appoint the mayor to the Shorelines Board. Stay in discussion on the motion.
I think it's a great idea.
You better hold up your end of this deal. Any further discussion? See none? Go ahead, place your vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is an executive session for one hour of potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I, as well as property acquisition pursuant to RCW 4230-1101B. City manager or city attorney, are we expect, do we think we're going to come back and make any decisions? So we're not going to come back and make any decisions tonight. We are going to take a break from eight, till 8:30 before we start, so we will be in executive session until 9:30, and then we will adjourn from there.